... First Mother's Day. And so then her mom lives in the factory area. And my younger son just got engaged and so his mom lives in... I'm great. I said, "Look, I..."
People can recognize me.
"I... well, I don't... I don't stand around going, 'Ooh, you need to make time for me.' And so we just kind of decided to establish last year that we would...
So anyway, they started this and they started this.
On Sunday night.
Yeah.
Kind of felt like we weren't getting any time. So this is our second annual Mother's Day dinner at Maximilian's Market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good job.
Very cool.
So what does she do from her job? She works... Yeah, and it feels so...
Oh.
It's very contrived.
I never remember that.
And he owns the property closely around the...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Or do we just wait for the FAA?
How come we're going to be marked down here? I can't move that well.
Who the... remember what?
I'll call to order the Monday, May 4th, 2015 City Council Regular Meeting and ask those in the audience who would like to join, myself, the council, in the Pledge of Allegiance, to please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is special business and that's Agenda Bill 6994, Police Week Proclamation. And I see that the Issaquah Police Department is well represented here this evening. I feel safer already. Great. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Issaquah, nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Since 1855, 34 years before Washington Territory became a state, over 275 law enforcement officers have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC, as well as those listed on the Washington State Law Enforcement Memorial in Olympia, Washington. And whereas 32 new names of fallen heroes in 2015 are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 117 officers killed in 2014 and officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 26th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2015. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is a part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 11 through 17, and May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. And US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2015 to be Police Week. In the city of Issaquah and publicly salute the services of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the city of Issaquah this 4th day of May 2015. And with that, I present this proclamation and express not only my gratitude, but the gratitude of our citizens in the outstanding work that you do in keeping our community safe 24 hours a day, 70... 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. So thank you for... We are indeed very fortunate to have a fine professional police department in our community looking after us. Another item of special business, we're honored this evening to have Senator Mark Mullet of the 5th Legislative District here to share with us his thoughts on what's going on Olympia as they kicked off their special session following the regular session. Senator Mullet, a former City Council member of this group, welcome. And what do you have to share with us this evening, Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Butler. And I have nothing but fond memories and that's the honest truth of everything that happened in this room. It was a very enjoyable experience. I loved it. And, well, I tried to pass out kind of a sheet and I can't, you know, say exactly everything's going to finish up, but I will say, based on the things and the meetings I've been in, I'll give you my best guess of where everything's going to finish up when we finally get out of town. Oh, that's not the sheet. That looks like an interesting sheet, though. It's more interesting than mine. Better graphics, for sure. Yeah. But I'll start with transportation. And so on the transportation side, there was two different transportation budgets that came out that funded two different sets of projects. The Senate had the extra lanes between Issaquah and Bellevue on I-90. And then the House version had the interchange out at Highway 18 and I-90 at Exit 25 in Snoqualmie. They're both big projects. The Issaquah project between here and Bellevue is 124 million. The project out of the interchange is 185 million. It was almost done, you know, intentionally to have the project... We couldn't get them both in either package, so we ended up putting one in each with the idea that at the end result, as we're negotiating, we can get both included. And the advice we were given to try to get the 5th District projects both included was can you reduce the cost of those projects? And the way we ended up reducing the cost from 124 down towards 70 million on the Issaquah to Bellevue lanes was they had these intelligent transportation systems and these grids go all the way across I-90. If you just put them on the shoulder lane, so it's just like a little lamp post as opposed to a big giant thing, that actually saved $13 million, which is kind of frightening. There was a lot of noise walls that when we actually did the noise testing, that weren't completely necessary. And they had the extra lane starting at Highlands Drive and going to Exit 13. And by shifting them to Exit 15 to East Gate, which I thought was a much more pragmatic in terms of where the traffic actually is, because it seems like a lot of people get off at East Gate to go to Microsoft. The combination of those three changes basically took $50 million off the project. So I'm optimistic that because we were able to reduce the cost of the Issaquah to Bellevue lanes on I-90, that we can get those lanes included along with the interchange out at Snoqualmie in this final transportation budget. The IJR study, the $2 million study to figure out what to do at Exit 17 here is, I think, safe regardless of whatever happens. I mean, it's a lower dollar amount. And then the other big project, which I think is important, it's in the House budget, not in the Senate, is the $5 million for Issaquah Falls City Road. And so I'm optimistic that that will also be in the final package. I know for Issaquah, that'll be a big deal. And in terms of the interchange, I always tell people in Issaquah who feel like it doesn't benefit this community, I am... I feel that Issaquah Hobart Road traffic would change if you can make... for people to Maple Valley to get to Bellevue and Seattle from Highway 18 to I-90, a much smoother experience. I think you'll get a lot of people to not end up using Issaquah Hobart Road as a cut-through. So I do think that interchange project actually has a lot of big benefits for what happens in the city of Issaquah, even though it's not as transparent. It's the direction most of us don't go every day. In terms of the capital projects, similar thing. There's projects in the House version that aren't in the Senate version. The Confluence Park is in the House version for $1 million. Once again, I'm optimistic that'll be in the final, you know, deal when everything's said and done. The Senate budget had a lot of smaller things that were in there, a lot to do with Lake Simamish State Park. And the Friends of Lake Simamish State Park have done a good job this session of getting down there and meeting people and kind of expressing how this is a big regional benefit, what we're trying to do out there. And so you have 750,000 for the playground, which right now is funded at the $500,000 level. So I think we're going to have to try to get that back to 750 for the new playground equipment. You have some state park project requests. There's 1.1 million for dock replacement at Lake Simamish. And that's in the Senate version, not in the House version. I think, once again, that, you know, we can defend the projects that showed up on one side or the other. To be honest, it helps that we have people from Republican side of the aisle and Democratic side of the aisle from the 5th District. Most districts don't have that. Usually, they're either all Republican or all Democrat. When you have kind of a partisan split, I think it gives you extra leverage as you're trying to get everything included in the final budget. And because people want to have votes from both sides on all these things. And the other capital projects that people... There's $300,000 to try to pave the road at Exit 20, the High Point Trailhead, as you get off there, where it's that big, long gravel road that develops kind of moon-sized craters on it. And that's also one the Mountains Sound Greenway has been supportive of that we're trying to work on, on getting in the final capital project list. And Central Park Fields actually showed up kind of out of left field, no pun intended, because there's a program called the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program. And even though the Central Park Field, there's like 450,000 for Central Park Fields on this WWRP project list, but it was like 91 out of 100 projects. And... but the way the Senate chose to fund that WWRP project is they didn't buy open space, but they funded every park and trail project all the way down the list. And so because they went down the entire list, the Central Park project ended up getting funded. And now because so many elected officials have gone back and told everybody about all the cool park and trail projects that got funded because the Senate went down to Item 120 on this list, it's going to be easier, in my opinion, to get out of Dodge by just buying open space on top of those park and trail projects. So hopefully, that'll be the final resolution on the capital budget where you can keep, like the Central Park project, you can keep that WWRP list funded in its entirety as the Senate had it. But then you can make some of the other people who want to buy open space happy by finding some additional money to buy the open space. And that's the good news. The more challenging news is how the city's kind of continually gets screwed over on the revenue share from the state. I will say, we're in the minority, people who are in Olympia who served in local city government before going to Olympia. I'm, you know, it's out of the 147 electeds, I'd say there's maybe 30 or 40 of us that came out of city council environments. And so there is a myth down there about the cities are flush with cash and when they're trying to solve the Olympia budget problems, they take the city's liquor money. They're trying not to share the marijuana tax revenue as it's coming in. There's kind of been an attack on this Public Works Assistance Account the city's used to do... They can borrow money at 1% to do water and sewer projects. And those are things that have come under attack as a way to try to generate revenue for the state that is basically at the ultimate expense of the same voters they're trying to claim they're being fiscally responsible for. And so this is kind of our battle, I felt in 2013. To be totally honest, we lost the battle. City's liquor revenue got swept. The Public Works Assistance Account got decimated. And to the city's credit, they did a better job when the session started this year of being a little more vocal in the importance of not making that same mistake again. But we still have budgets that were written that make those same mistakes again. So through your, you know, interactions on the Suburban City Association, I would highly get everyone energized in this final month. And because it's going to be important that we make sure as we balance our budget to get out of Dodge by June 30th, that it's not at the expense of the cities and counties. And the final deal, we didn't pass the Marijuana Revenue Sharing Bill, but the hang-up wasn't over the sharing amount with the cities. And it wasn't like a home run for the cities and counties. It was the first budget cycle, they would get 12 million. So that's 15 to 17. The second budget cycle, they would get 30 million. That's 17 to 19. Then eventually, they let it go to 40 million, which is, you know, 19 and onwards. But to be honest, we're... it's a giant pool of revenue. So when you're... even if you're getting 40 million, it's not like you're getting your fair share of the money, in my opinion. But I would definitely encourage everyone to be vocal on the marijuana revenue share. Be vocal on not having your liquor money swept again, because there is a budget out there that does sweep the city's liquor money again. And so I think the stories about how this money pays for police officers resonates with the general public. So I think it's just reminding people, when you're taking money from cities, you're really taking money from your local parks and from your local police and fire protection. And I think the more we emphasize that message in the final month or two in Olympia, hopefully, it'll help the cities out. And, yeah. So, and the Public Works Assistance Account is, you know, it's just going to be a challenge to keep it alive. It's got $1.3 billion in there. They loan out money at 1%. Every single dollar gets paid back. There is people, though, that say we should take those repayments and use them for the operating budget. But the problem is, if you do that, since you've already signed agreements, that money's already spoken for. It's being... it's already been re-loaned out because they knew it was coming back. So in previous years, we've already agreed to fund projects that relied on those repayments. And so once you take the repayments, well, now you have to issue bonds at 4% for 25 years, which is really, you're issuing debt to solve your operating budget crisis, which I think we can all agree is not a great fiscal choice. And so the more cities can kind of, you know, play this message out that that is not... that the Public Works Assistance Account doesn't have to grow and expand and double in size, but it needs to be left alone. So the cities have this resource for some low-interest loans and we can't use it to backfill the operating budget by basically shutting it down and issuing bonds, you know, with 4% interest. But that's kind of the... It'll be an interesting final six weeks, but I am optimistic on the transportation. I do think we're going to have a transportation package. I wouldn't say that if I didn't believe it. And I do think we'll have a good capital budget when everything's said and done. Operating budget's going to be trickier. That'll be the big question mark. And nobody, at this point in time, if they tell you they know how it's going to finish, is not telling the truth, because I don't think any of us know exactly how we're going to balance the books to get out of Dodge on the operating budget side. So hopefully, that helps.
I'd like to thank you very much, Senator Mullet, for coming back to your old haunt and providing that update on what you see in Olympia. And let's hope that your predictions come true for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So now moving to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so this evening. When recognized, please come to the lectern. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If the speaker is out of order, the mayor will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, the mayor will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizen's comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process and we welcome them and take them seriously. And we thank members for taking the time to come to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes. First on the list, we have three students, Amy, Annika, and Anne. If you want to step forward.
Good evening, council members. My name's Amy Lee. I'm a senior at Issaquah High School. And my address is 1045 First Place, Southeast Issaquah, Washington, 98027.
Hi, my name's Annika Kumar. I'm in the 7th grade and I go to Beaver Lake Middle School. And my address is 26322, Southeast 21st Place, Simamish, Washington, 98075.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anne Robertson. I am a senior at Issaquah High School as well and I live at 21629 Southeast 35th Street, Simamish, Washington, 98075. We are sustainability ambassadors. Our mission is to empower youth to catalyze community sustainability. We are here speaking to you tonight to give a report on the first annual Community Sustainability Summit that was held April 22nd at Issaquah High School. The purpose of the Sustainability Summit was to measurably improve sustainable community conditions while strengthening local connections across generations and community sectors, including the school district, city and county government, local businesses, nonprofits, and other community-based organizations. So at the summit, we had representatives from all five middle schools and all three high schools, school administration, sustainable business partners like Recology Cleanscapes, Built Green, and King County EnviroStars program, nonprofits like Mountains Sound Greenway, Fish, and the Cascade Bicycle Club, and county programs like King County Forestry and the King County Green Schools program. Superintendent Ron Thailey attended the morning session as did the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning and the District Resource Conservation Manager.
Now, before we move on to sample testimonials, well, I felt that the summit... In the summit, we made a lot of progress and I think that Issaquah is in a really good shape to do a lot of great things in the area of sustainability. And now, how did the business leaders and reps that came to the summit feel after leaving the summit? And what impression did the summit leave on them? Well, once... part of one testimonial that came from Leah Misk, the Built Green Program Manager, states that "At the end of the day, I found myself feeling secure in a hopeful and positive tomorrow. The sustainability ambassadors are indeed creating and embracing a culture of sustainability." So now, what happened in the morning and what happened in the afternoon? And how did we come up with this, with the collective impact project? So in the morning, there were reports from all the five middle schools and the three high schools in the Issaquah School District. And then there were reports from all the community sectors that were invited. In the afternoon, we came up with one collective impact project and we did this by first understanding what collective impact really is and the five parts to collective impact. So then we reviewed the Creed III criteria for a collective impact project to test against sample projects that we would make at the... Later in the day and had some personal reflection time to come up with our own collective impact projects. Lastly, we worked in groups to share our ideas for a collective impact project and came up with a few best projects in our respective groups. Then we came to consensus on one collective impact project as a whole group, which turned out to be designing a zero-waste society, because we saw a trend and pattern of waste reduction in schools and in most of the businesses and nonprofits like Built Green, Recology Cleanscapes, and King County EnviroStars.
So for this project, designing a zero-waste society, we carefully organized it around the five areas of achieving the maximum collective impact, which are a common agenda, having a backbone organization, with mutually reinforcing actions, a shared measurement system, and lastly, continuing communication. So the most important of these is common agenda, because for such a complex project, it requires a clear and concise objective for everybody to achieve. And we have six project goals that we outlined at the summit, which include increasing recycling and composting rates at every high school and middle school in the district, establishing curriculum rigor and relevance in classrooms through teacher-facilitated, project-designed-based learning. We also decided to establish strong connections with community partners like the community sector reports included in the summit. We decided to also focus on the green teams at these schools and allow them to use collective impact projects to generate collective impact. And lastly, we decided that in order to achieve the maximum impact, we need to allow these three areas, the curriculum, the community, and the school district to exchange their learnings and their knowledge to facilitate the growth of ideas and to educate the general community on sustainable community conditions.
If you could wrap that up in 30 seconds.
So what shared measurement systems did we use to do this? We used the city indicators to align with the green schools criteria by navigating through the indicators website and... in the Issaquah's website and the green schools' website. And for every level in the green schools program, we compared it to the indicator that matched that level in the morning part of the summit, just before the community sector reports. Also, for Level 4 of the King County Green Schools, we connected it to the indicator about mobility. We also made sure that the collective impact project connected with the green schools and the city indicators.
So what we would really like to do is we would like to invite the city of Issaquah and the government of the city of Issaquah to work closely with us on this collective impact project. We're very excited about the work that we will be able to achieve this year. And we would really like to come back sometime in June or July for a 10 or 15-minute segment on your agenda to give you a report on the actions that are already going to be starting to take place at that time and to work out some ways that we can really work more closely with the city of Issaquah to achieve our first annual collective impact project. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks to each of you also for that status report. It's very exciting that you've got a project now that you can work on.
Lee Woods.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lee Woods. I'm a retired architect. I live at 760 Second Avenue Northwest in Issaquah. It's just about a half a block from Gilman Village. I've lived here for 16 years. I've owned property here for 10 years, more than that. I own three apartment buildings in Issaquah. And I volunteer at the court every Friday. I'm a mediator in court. Reason I'm here, and some of these comments might be familiar with you or to you, because I sent you all a letter. My concern is the old Elks Club. The Elks Club is a half a block north of Confluence Park on Rainier Boulevard North. The Elks is out of business. That property is for sale. I was shocked to find that the zoning, M-U-R, allowed a restaurant in that zoning. What I suspect has happened is that when the planning was going on, designating certain areas as different zones to encourage growth of that type in that area, the Elks Club was already there in operation. So I suspect that the M-U-R zoning was picked so that they wouldn't have to ask the Elks to move or give them an exception. That's what I think happened. But we are where we are. And the area has grown and it's residential. It's totally residential. The only thing in the area bounded by Rainier and the Creek, Holly Street, which is north of Confluence Park and Gilman Village, is one bank. The rest of it is residential and it's totally built out. So there was a rumor that I heard that this property was bought by some Chinese investors and they were going to put a Chinese restaurant there. Absolutely the wrong thing to do. I've checked, the property has not closed. I've also checked with the city planning department. They haven't applied for a permit of any type at all. And I've got to tell you that when the property is selling for $1.8 million, you don't close the deal without having a condition that you will get permits. So as far as I can tell, nothing has happened with the property up to this point. So what I'm asking from you folks is to modify the zoning and change it back to residential only. Actually, it could be offices, because they keep about the same hours that residences do, in at 9, out at 5, and then it's quiet. Restaurants, on the other hand, as you know, they might finish up at 2:00 in the morning and then the supplies start coming in at 6:00. So it's a whole different, whole different category of use. So I'm asking the city council to change the zoning. With nothing in the works on the impact, I think this change could be made. With nothing in the works on the impact, I think this change could be made without any problem. Any questions that I can answer? Maybe I can't answer, but I should try. Nothing? Okay. I have a handout that basically is what I've said, so.
Thank you.
Sophie Martz.
Hello. My name is Sophie Martz. I am a junior at Issaquah High School. I live at 1100 Idlewood Drive Southwest, Issaquah, Washington, 98027. I came here to talk to you all about the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board. I am a member of this board, and along with about 40 other members. And basically, our mission is to encourage youth leadership. We create events around the community, at the community center, and that kind of thing. So, I just wanted to let you know that a few of the things we've been doing, and I know as budget season approaches, when you consider continuing to fund our program, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your continued support of this program. We're actually, next year's Youth Advisory Board is the 20th year that we've had the program going. So, we're actually working on a reunion for all the 20 years of members that have gone through the program, and I think that's a strong testament to how involved the students on this board are, that they are willing to come back, and it's really a, not only just a community service extracurricular, but it's really a family. So, there are 40 members, and we go through an application and interview process, which is actually happening right now. We've got our applications out, and we're recruiting new members. So, that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. And the past few years, this is my third year on the board, and I'm going to be on it the fourth year next year, but I've always gotten to be involved in the interview process. And I think the way we do it is to get to know the applicants a little bit better, and to see what they have to offer, and not only, they don't have to be perfect applicants, but we want to see just the, what they can offer to our board, and the way we can help them grow as individuals. So, some of the things that we've done this year, there's a really long list, so I'll just kind of summarize it for you, but we volunteered, we've volunteered once a month at the food bank all year long, and they really like us there. They keep asking us, for us specifically, to come back and help them out, so they really appreciate our continual commitment to them. We've worked, we work over the summer. We worked with trunk and treasure tools for schools, and then our biggest fundraiser is our Salmon Days parking lot. We've helped put together Fall Fun Fest. We held a poetry slam at the Issaquah Coffee Company. We helped decorate the lobby at the community center. We held a science symposium. We volunteered a large majority of our board at the caring-through-sharing gift barn. We held a night of challenges for some of the younger kids, a middle school dodgeball tournament, a middle school three-on-three basketball tournament, and one of my favorite events was one that I helped plan and I was really involved with, was State of Mind. So, I'm not sure if you guys heard about that, but it was on March 21st, and the goal was to empower and educate youth to create and maintain a healthy lifestyle with the intent of bettering themselves and our community. So, we had, we had a bunch of community speakers on topics like how drugs impact developing brains, self-care and stress management, developing healthy relationships, helping friends in crisis, recognizing signs of distress in others, and body image and eating disorders. And so, I think the events that we're holding just offer a really valuable resource for other teens and youth in our community, and it's not just an extracurricular, it's really a family of people who are being, who are catalyzing their interest in youth service, and it'll last a lifetime. So, thank you so much for your funding and support.
Thank you.
David Kapler.
Good evening, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. A little historical note that Eileen might be the only one who would remember then, when the Elks Club was a funeral home before it was, and I don't imagine it was too noisy at night. I can remember when I was on Newcastle Community Committee in the early 80s, people complaining about residential uses near the places that were open till 2:00 a.m., and the noise at 2:00 a.m. of all the beer bottles being dumped into the, hopefully, recycle bins at 2:00 a.m. And that is a serious problem with restaurants near residential areas. Squawk Mountain, the new trail and the new park will be opening on June 6th, National Trails Day. You don't need a Discover Park because of King County levy that pays for King County Parks, which is going to be a nice feature. One of the emphasis on that, that land over time is going to be education. We're working with the Issaquah School District and Tohoma School District, which has generated many, the superintendent of Issaquah Schools from Tohoma, a lot of the leaders, the curriculum leader in Issaquah is from Tohoma. Tohoma's been doing a lot of stuff with education, environmental education for years, and student and a teacher from Tohoma are on this committee, working to how we can figure out how to use that site for educational activities that are regional in scope, as well as directly related to the Issaquah School District, especially with the potential of using the lodge as an area of making a real nice experience for kids there, and some displays, permanent displays and all, which we can't do at this time up at High Point. Third item, Talis. Seven, eight, and nine is residents are going crazy with the noise and the construction there, which will be continuing for a long time. Concern, of course, from Issaquah Trails Club and other, other concerns, personal concerns, is what's going to be happening with the adjoining lands that are private up there, and to how, what process the city will be going through to determine the potential for accessing those lands and annexing them or serving them with water, sewer, and stormwater. That process needs to be explained. The other concern with Talis, I sent the picture today, the sign is totally invisible, that there's a potential connection between Talis and Newport Way, and with all the new survey ribbons and wetland ribbons and creek ribbons on the property north of Talis, above Newport Way, there's quite a bit of anxiety about the potential of a road from Talis to Newport, which would be very advantageous for some people, but for others would turn their relatively lightly neighborhood road into practically arterial status. So, the process by which that determination about that road needs to be communicated to the community, and also that sign needs to be visible, so that the people that have moved in since it's been blocked by the vegetation will know that issue. Lastly, the senior center, I think is, I think we can all admit is presently dysfunctional. The model that we're using of a private group running that for the city and for the residents is, needs to be changed. Many cities with much smaller populations and a lot less resources are running their senior centers through park and recreation departments, and are offering their citizens, all of their citizens, a much broader array of services, and the present situation is limited who's being served, and it's just not fair. This thing is going to continue on, and it's just completely ridiculous that our food bank director can't go over there. It's really bad that Regina Poyer and David Waggoner have been no trespass from the facility and would be arrested if they went in. Thank you, police officers, for coming over and seeing me when there was a harassment complaint against me, and the officer talked with me, checked in with headquarters, and then said, "You're fine, what you're doing, no problem," and much appreciated. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening desiring to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's David Waggoner, and I live at 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, apartment K204, Issaquah, 98027. I'm not here to talk to you tonight about the senior center. I'm here, as, and many of the council members know, I wear a lot of different hats in the city. So, I'm here tonight with my veteran's hat on, and that is to invite you to our annual Memorial Day celebration and service up at Lower Hillside Cemetery. That'll be May 25th at 10:00 a.m. And Jay Rodney, who is our fifth district rep, will speak, probably in his Marine Corps uniform, because he's a Reserve Lieutenant Colonel, Marine Corps. He, sorry, sorry. Only Fred and I would know that. He's now in full O6, a full colonel, and he will speak to the community. Love to have you there. If, in fact, it's raining or in climate weather, we will be at the community center, same time, a little closer, but we'll stay dry, okay? And thank you for your support. One last thing, there will be a newspaper article that will come out the 20th. It's called "Lest We Forget." And in that paper, there will be over 300 veterans who have lived in the greater Issaquah area at some time in their life. My picture will be in there as well. And I just want you to remember that we lost 19 veterans in combat that lived here in the Issaquah area. That's something we never want to forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Seeing no one, then, audience comments are closed, and we'll move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to present a short report from the King Conservation District. And the City of Issaquah works a great deal with the Conservation District, as it is a source of monies for projects that involve agriculture and land preservation. But I wanted to particularly catch the ear of our listeners and people in the audience who might be landowners, who would be interested in an element of the grant program that they are implementing this year, in the 2015 grants, and applications are open right now. And this one is called Urban Aquatic Habitat for Restoring Aquatic Areas. So, if you live along the creek or in other areas that qualify, you can get grants for removing invasive species and replacing with native species. And under this program, the landowner only pays 10% of the cost of the project, and KCD provides 90%. I'm going to give a name, but the contact name is Adam Jackson, but if you could just remember to go to the King Conservation District website, it's very easy to find this program. It's called Urban Aquatic Habitat Grant Program for Landowners. And because we are a member city, the City of Issaquah, any of the landowners within the city qualify to be considered for it. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Growth Management Policy Board did not meet in May. Their next meeting is June 4th, and the agenda has not yet been set. Land and Shore will be meeting this Thursday, May 7th, in the council chambers. We will be looking at AB 6894, which is the Transfer of Development Rights. This is an update of an inter-local agreement that we currently have with King County. That will be coming back to the full council likely on the May 18th meeting. We'll also be looking at AB 7001, Amendments to the Land Use Code. There are two amendments to the code in that agenda bill. One is about the storage of firewood, and the other is about the wetland rating system. That should be coming back to the full council on June 15th, if we get through with it at our Land and Shore meeting. And then, the big one, AB 6955, Land and Shore will be doing its review of some comp plan elements on Thursday, and specifically, that is the land use element, economic vitality element, and the capital facilities element, and rezones and re-designations. This will be coming back to a council work session, which will be next Monday on May 11th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz, father of Sophie, who spoke to us earlier this evening.
Why, yes, I am. Thank you for pointing that out. Very proud father. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on Wednesday, April 22nd. We had one issue before us. We amended the countywide planning policies pertaining basically to municipal engagement with local school districts regarding school district capacity in response to ongoing growth. You know, we, as a city, have a great relationship, we maintain a good relationship with the superintendent of the school district, but, you know, some cities need a little bit of a push, and this is a way to help them get that. Then, on Tuesday, May 12th, the Services and Safety Committee will be meeting at 5:30 in the Eagle Room in City Hall. The agenda has not been finalized, but it is likely to include 6989, which is Inter-local Agreements for Prosecution, Defense, and Municipal Court Services, Agenda Bill 7004, which is an inter-local agreement between King County and the City of Issaquah for use of electronic fingerprint capture equipment. Agenda Bill 6955, the ever-popular 2015 Comp Plan Amendments, will be coming back, as it's my understanding that city planning staff would like to talk to us further about the elements that we looked at last month, and we may be getting a update on the pool reconstruction. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on April 21st. We had a very full agenda and lengthy meeting. The first item we discussed was a food packaging ordinance update, and we heard from staff, as well as our consultant with Full Circle Environmental, which was our contractor for outreach, and they reported on 62 restaurants that they visited and provided education and technical assistance, too. We got a report back that says the compliance rate is overall good with respect to the ordinance. There are some issues relating to property owners signing up businesses for compost service, and the committee recommended that the Office of Sustainability continue to work with property managers on that issue. There's also, hopefully, more outreach to help restaurants become fully compliant with the law, both front-of-house and back-of-house. There are still a few places in town that have Styrofoam containers, and it was emphasized that we want to try to weed that out. This has been on the books now for several years. And I would just say, you know, our staff and our Office of Sustainability is doing a fantastic job with the education that this ordinance necessarily entails, but if you amongst the public see any issues with respect to Styrofoam packaging or other types of problems with recycling or compost at a restaurant, you know, feel free to shoot an email, because it's not something that staff can be everywhere to look at and manage. And a lot of times, it's just an educational issue with turnover either by employees or management at a restaurant, and it just takes sometimes a simple reminder for folks to do the right thing. We also took action on Agenda Bill 6995, which is on tonight's regular business, so we'll come back to that later in tonight's agenda. We also discussed the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, looked at the utilities and public services element, as well as the transportation element, and had a number of comments to make. There was also some discussion about the format of the materials and how they were presented, and our understanding of the various track changes in the documents. And as has been mentioned in a previous report, that'll be coming back to other committees, such as Land and Shore. We also discussed the master, Mobility Master Plan. We also discussed the master, Mobility Master Plan, and talked about a draft summary of an explanatory statement for that plan, and that will continue to get some work and come back to the committee sometime later this year or sooner. We also talked about the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is on tonight's consent agenda for the scheduling of a public hearing, and then to come back to the Infrastructure Committee at our May meeting, and we'll begin discussing some prioritization of projects as well in terms of the CFP, the Capital Facilities Plan, at our next meeting in May. We also had two agenda bills with franchise agreements, 6986 and 6929, with Level 3 Communications Telecom, both of which were recommended for approval on tonight's consent agenda. And then finally, we had Agenda Bill 6983, which is also on tonight's consent agenda concerning the sidewalk extension on Newport Way from 12th to Maple, which had been before the council at our April meeting, and the committee agreed that this was an appropriate project based on scoring and rankings that were presented to us by Public Works Engineering. The next infrastructure meeting is scheduled for May 16th at 5:30 in the Pickering Room. And just real briefly, to give my regional report, the East Side Transportation Partnership will be meeting this Friday, May 8th, at the Redmond Silver Cloud Inn, same location as last month, not the usual location. Currently, the agenda calls for a vote on funding for a technology symposium this fall, which we will be working with an organization called CATS, which helps put on these types of programs. There's also a vote to extend the ETP interlocal agreement through 2017, which unless amended, automatically renews. So if anyone has any concerns about that ILA, please let me know after the meeting. We're going to have a presentation from Duval, spotlighting that city this month in terms of local transportation projects in Duval. And then we're going to have some procedural and housekeeping matters, and a presentation from PSRC called their Stuck-in-Traffic 2015 Report, which sounds scintillating to hear about being stuck in traffic. There is one hidden item, not on the official ETP agenda, that I will let you know about, and that is, and we'll find out in the next couple of days, Representative Kluber may be able to join us and give her her perspective on the final throes of the transportation package in Olympia, at least from the House perspective. So stay tuned, and we may we may get Representative Kluber to come to this meeting as well, which, again, will be at the Redmond Silver Cloud Inn, 7:30 in the morning on Friday. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
No report.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. East Side Fire and Rescue's Board of Directors will meet on May 14th at 4:00 p.m. The agenda has not been set yet. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Winterside.
And has already been mentioned, next Monday on May 11th, we have a council committee of the whole. It's been mentioned that we will, on the agenda, is a look at some of the comprehensive plan updates. That's, we've got an hour set aside for that. Then we've got two hours set aside for council goals. And so we're going to be taking a look at the status of current goals that are being, that are active, and then it's a chance to review, as a group, all of the goals that were submitted and the staff's response. I would encourage all my colleagues on the council to prepare ahead of time, get familiar with the goals that are on there. This is, we've got almost a month between this review and when we're going to have our retreat to vote on these. And this gives staff plenty of time to either gather some additional information and answer any questions we may have, and also be prepared to, and I haven't really worked through the formal, you know, process that we're going to do next Monday, but we'll be working with the administration on their presentation of their responses, but also each of us, our kind of review and presentation of the goals that we submitted. So be prepared. I'll have some more information out to each of you in advance, so you know what to expect. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session held this evening. Council Milligan and I attended the April 22 Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting. Of interest, Issaquah, the board approved a sponsorship agreement for Issaquah Salmon Days in the amount of $2,100, and a sponsorship agreement for a, an Issaquah Concerts on the Green performance in the amount of $2,000. I attended the April 23 Sound Transit Board Meeting. We received an update on Sound Transit III conceptual system expansion scenarios, one of which includes the next step at looking at the I-90 corridor. We approved the preferred alternative for the Linwood Link, and of special interest to us, adopted the East Link baseline schedule and budget. The budget for that next major addition to Link is $3.7 billion with a completion date in 2023. That's a long way off, but some of the work in the I-90 tunnels that have impacted traffic over the past several weekends are life safety improvements that are needed for that. So it's exciting that Light Rail will be coming to the east side. Celebrate Earth Week, I had the pleasure of hosting the annual Kokoni Fry Release Ceremony on April the 24th. Local leaders included, including King County Executive Konstantin, and representatives from other lakeside cities, and the Snoqualmie Tribe participated and celebrated the success of the Kokoni Work Group. Issaquah is a proud partner in that, that group. We're represented in that group with, by Councilmember Barber. It's a great example of government agencies, nonprofit groups, citizens, and other organizations working together to save Kokoni from extinction. Last week, we hosted Issaquah's Second Job Fair. Following our successful job last year, we hosted 28 employers on April the 28th at the Pickering Barn. I had the opportunity to meet with employers and many job seekers. In addition to helping people find employment, we also provided coaching to help participants improve their resumes and interviewing skills. Thanks to our Economic Development Department and our cosponsors, the Workforce Development Council of Seattle, King County, and the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce and the Issaquah School District for producing another great event. Just as a matter of interest, we celebrated Issaquah's 123rd birthday this past April the 29th, and unveiled a new portrait board of some restored pictures of all of Issaquah's former mayors, including our longest-serving mayor, Ava Freisinger, who was added to the board with the dates of her service to our community as our mayor. I attended the April 30th Pugetstown Regional Council General Assembly meeting. Redmond Mayor John Marchionni was elected chair, and Snohomish County Executive John Lovick was elected vice chair for the next two years. And I am sad to announce the passing of an Issaquah icon, McNugget, the rooster that lived near Staples, and the Your Espresso Stand. It is interesting to see how he has touched so many people. A lot of young children have shed a tear or two, and there's a growing memorial in the vicinity of the espresso stand that continues to build. And so that concludes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I would ask the city clerk to read the consent calendar into the record, please.
Yes, the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of council payables and payroll dated May 4. Items B and C seeks approval of minutes of the city council regular meeting dated April 6, and the city council regular meeting dated April 20th, as revised. Item D, AB 6929, franchise agreement, Level 3 communications regarding an indirect change of control, this seeks adoption of an ordinance. If approved, it will be assigned number 2738. Item E, AB 6983, complete street sidewalk extension on Newport Way from 12th Avenue Northwest to Maple Street, seeks authorization. Item F, AB 6984, transfer development rights, interlocal agreement with King County seeks referral to council land and shore committee. Item G, AB 6986, franchise agreement, Level 3 communications, this is regarding the granting of a franchise, seeks adoption of an ordinance, and if approved, will be assigned number 2739. Excuse me. Item H, AB 6989, interlocal agreements for prosecution, defense, and municipal court services, seeks referral to council services and safety committee. Item I, AB 7000, is the Six-Year Transportation and Movement Improvement Program, TIP. This sets the related public hearing for June 1, and refers the agenda bill to council infrastructure committee for, excuse me, for a review of the proposed TIP projects. Item J, AB 7001, amendments to IMC 18.07 land use code, code, excuse me, involving storage of firewood and the wetland rating system, this seeks referral to council land and shore committee. Item K, AB 7002, interlocal agreement with King County for use of electronic fingerprint capture equipment, seeks referral to council services and safety committee. Item L, AB 7003, public defense standards, seeks referral to council services and safety committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, then, Council President Winterside.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to item eight on our agenda, regular business. Agenda Bill 6995, Corps of Engineers Memorandum of Agreement for Anderson House. This is coming back from the council infrastructure committee. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor, and we have Sheldon Liden, Director of Public Works Engineering, here as well, if there are any questions during the discussion on this bill. I'm going to paraphrase most of the summary statement, which is rather lengthy. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look it over. This bill is seeking authorization to execute a memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and authorize an expenditure of $250,000 as mitigation for the project's impacts to the historical Anderson House. The master site plan for Confluence Park identified the Anderson House as needing to be removed or relocated as part of the park's development, with the possibility of using it as a city facility. Subsequently, the house was evaluated and determined to be unsuitable for the city facility. Additionally, the plan, the MSP, showed a plan to restore the habitat along the east fork of the creek from Rainier Boulevard to its confluence with the main stem. As part of the permitting for the stream restoration work, the Army Corps required a National Historic Preservation Act review of structures and the need to mitigate for any impacts. In late 2014, the Corps review identified the Anderson Farmstead, including the house and already-removed barn, as historical and impacted by city activities. To mitigate for these impacts related to the barn and house, the city negotiated the draft MOA with the Corps and stakeholder agencies involved in the process. It requires $250,000 paid by us as mitigation for impacts to the Anderson Farmstead, which will be used for the purpose of relocating and restoring the Anderson House, or providing grant funds for the purpose of restoring historical structures in Issaquah, and Washington Trust for Historic Preservation to manage the process to relocate or restore the house and manage the grant, or manage the grant program, and the house to be removed from the property by others no later than the end of this year. The city has grant funds to construct the stream restoration at the park that needs to be expended during the fisheries window this year, which we, which means we must agree to the MOA no later than May 18th, which would allow for the Corps to complete its process and issue the required permit for the fisheries window. Otherwise, the grant funding will expire, and we would either need to fund the project itself or reapply and compete for grants in the future. In any case, we require a Corps of Engineers permit, which requires the historical review with the same outcome as provided in the MOA. The stream restoration is an important project to the salmon recovery efforts by Wyra 8, as well as the implementation of the Confluence Park MSP. The funding of the $250,000 would come from the general fund ending balance. Due to the need to construct the project this year, because the grants are set to expire early next year, time is of the essence. The administration is recommending the MOA regarding the resolution of adverse effects on the Anderson House and authorizing the $250,000 payment. We reviewed this in committee on April 21st. We were briefed by staff regarding the purpose of the MOA to commit us to providing the money in mitigation for impacts to this historical Anderson homestead. There's also $1 million in grant funding for the restoration of this section of the stream, which is integral to the adopted Confluence Park MSP. If we don't receive the Corps permit this year, we would lose the grant funds currently obligated for the project. We acknowledge the importance and high value of the stream restoration project and recognize the city was still receiving more funds than it would be expending for the project overall. We did ask about the health of the general fund balance and its ability to afford the expense. We've been updated that, per the year-end financial report, the 2014 general fund ending balance grew by over $620,000 and is now more than $8.3 million, which is roughly 23% of annual expenditures, meeting and exceeding the city's reserve policy. We also have sufficient funds to handle the $250,000 payment outlined in the MOA. We talked about the general fund and whether it was the appropriate source of funding. The answer is that the utilities fund balances are first and foremost meant to maintain reserve levels, providing for coverage of seasonal variability of revenues. The stormwater fund balance is used to address and improve stormwater runoff volume and quality, mitigate for flooding, and restore creeks. The Anderson House is proposed for relocation or removal due to the Confluence Park MSP, not due to stormwater requirements. We also talked about attributing the expense to a particular department. However, the accounting would be, if we did that, it would be geared towards gaining a better understanding of more consistent, ongoing costs associated with operating a department, division, service, or program. Attaching a large one-time expense to a particular department may impair the ability to use cost accounting for these sort of purposes. Following the discussion, the committee recommended approval of this MOA, and the amount of mitigation for the restoration project was deemed acceptable. So with that update, I would move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and authorize payment of $250,000 from the general fund end balance.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Tolts? Mars? Councilmember Martz, followed by Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question that I would have, and I appreciate that infrastructure spent some time looking at funding, the sort of obvious one that I wanted to ask is, did we have any money left in the Parks Bond? And if so, could this come out of Parks Bond instead of, out of general fund? Because it sure seems a shame to take it out of general fund.
There's no funds that would be left that would be able to be utilized for this project out of the Parks Bond. Parks Bond had a list of projects when we issued the bonds that were identified, and this was not one of them.
So all the, all the funds in the Park Bond were spoken for?
Yeah, they're, they're committed. They haven't necessarily been expended, but they're already committed, yeah.
There was a specific list of projects in the Park Bond that identified where the money, money would go. Councilmember Milligan.
Mr. Mayor, I have two questions. One of them regards the amount of the expenditure planned of the $250,000, and I'm not sure if I understand it correctly, but it seems like it may be more than that. Say that of all of the options, one of, if, if restoring and removing and relocating the house does not come to pass, and all other options are extinguished, and the city has but left to it to demolish the house, that has expenditure as well. And I don't see that planned, because it seems that that would be on top of the $250,000. Is that correct? And what do we do about that?
That would be correct. The $250,000 is simply to pay off, to pay the requirement that the city is committed to under the MOA. So if there is demolition that would take place, if we weren't successful in finding a nonprofit to move the house, that would be the city's responsibility, as well as the restoration of the site.
Is that both questions?
No, that's just one of the questions, but it seems like, Paul, are you responding to my question?
If I may, if I may. It's, it's, it's an either-or, is the way I understand this. It would be either we, there is a qualified applicant for a grant who wants to relocate and possibly restore, or if not, those funds put into another fund for, for the restoration of historical structures in Issaquah. So it's actually, I think I said that wrong. So it's either, it's either for the remove, the relocation of this, or it goes into another fund for use, and then expenditures are on top of that, if for, for demolition. Okay. All right.
Thank you. And so then I'm just bringing to my and our attention that this isn't the, possibly not the complete bill for this. And then, thank you for that. And then, thank you for that clarification, because if I may, my second question regards exactly what you were talking about, and that is the historic property grant program that could occur, and that the funds would go to another property. And I just wanted to ask, under the criteria there, in our packet, it is page 271 of 288, number three, B, and then number one, these are criteria for qualification for the grant program. Are you following me, Bob? Because this question's for you. Okay. The local landmark designation eligibility, that seems fairly vague. What does local mean in this case? And I wondered if that could be refined to say which designation is the criteria? Is local city of Issaquah landmark designation? King County landmark designation? You know, what is, what would it specifically, what would specifically qualify?
Well, it would specifically qualify a local landmark designation. So...
Maybe I don't understand how it's written, I guess.
It would be, so that is one of the screening criteria. So if there is a, already an existing designated property that's eligible, or they would look at potentially pursuing, you know, designation along with their application, those would be eligible. But the criterion is going to be developed by the nonprofit. So while the city will have some input into that, you know, the final screening criteria is going to be if this, if it turns out that this is the avenue the money, the funds are used for, that would be utilized as part of the...
Yeah, okay. So then it's the third party, that, that grant administrator who works on that. Okay. Good, good. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Are you ready to act? All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and authorize payment of $250,000 from the general fund in balance, ending fund balance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to, for good of the order, does anyone have anything this evening? Council President Wintersheim.
Just wanted to report that we, I did my duty in reviewing the payment vouchers at the beginning. You normally ask for that, and for the record, I just wanted to make sure we got that answer on the record.
Yes, thank you very, very much for that.
Payment and payroll vouchers.
I did as well.
Guess I have that reviewed.
I, I feel a lot better right now. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Since last I saw the entire group, Councilmember Polly and I attended the Bellevue College Foundation Annual Luncheon, and I think we both had a wonderful time, and the east campus was definitely mentioned, and I know that they are committed to continuing to work with the city on that future expansion. There was over $250,000 that came in towards college programs and needy students, so it was exceptional. The emcee was former fullback Mac Strong. You might have heard of him with the Seahawks, and he did a fantastic job, and we had a lot of local elected officials. Councilmembers Hague and Lambert were both present, as well as council members from other city jurisdictions such as Sammamish and Bellevue and other places on the east side. So we were definitely there, flying the Issaquah flag, and saw a lot of familiar and friendly folks.
Councilmember Mars.
You know, I don't think I mentioned it the second meeting in April, but if I did, I apologize. I was lucky, I've been lucky enough to be appointed to the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, representing the Sound Cities Association. So hopefully, between that and heading up the Services Committee for the city and being involved in Law and Social Justice Committee for King County, that that'll put the city in a good position to be involved in some of the public safety and emergency issues that come up regionally in the area.
Great.
I look forward to presenting reports after the first EMAC committee meeting that I attend.
We'll look forward to that. Anyone else? Councilmember Polly.
I've forgotten, but last week, last week? Last week, Eileen Barber and I went to the Friends of Lake Sammamish Park Invitational Paddle Around the Lake and meeting with the executive director, and it was about an hour and a half to two hours long. There were some council members there from Sammamish as well, but it was, it was a pretty good event, and I would encourage you next year when they invite to go, you learn an awful lot about the park in a short time.
Perfect. Now, did you take the walking tour, or did you paddle?
Yeah, we paddled.
Good for you. Okay. Anything else for good of the order? Seeing none, then, we are adjourned.
Josh, before you take off, can I just, we have a few minutes.
Someone you and... You said you had a few minutes.